Hey, everyone. It's eight fifteen. Let's begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Anything to add? Delete the agenda?
Mr. Chair, under planning and filming, we should be removing the WeFest annual conditional use permit. That'll come back up next, the next meeting.
Anything else?
No.
The board of board?
Motion approved.
What for Barry?
Well, second.
Everybody Dave, all the way or say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
On the minutes of the environment June eighteenth. Corrections?
No, Mr. Chair, I don't have a correction, but I have a thought. When we approve the consent agenda, do you think we should list the items that were in the consent agenda or just for the minute? I mean, like especially resolutions. I mean, how do you reference what was approved if you don't have them in your minutes?
Um, let's see, other than you're indicating, I guess you'd have to look back. So I guess it's, we could certainly take a look at that.
I think for certain resolutions should be listed and then any other, I think just when we approve the consent agenda, maybe just list the items that were approved in that. I don't know, especially resolutions.
Yeah.
So it's referenced?
Yeah.
Yeah. Certainly take a look at that.
The only one I had was page two of three, under County Administrator, Human Resources, number three. That motion, that was the, never mind.
Nope.
We adopted the ten step scale, but didn't we fix the language for the?
Yeah, we amended the.
Yeah, we amended the resolution to fix the language for the, not the ten step scale though, but to fix.
Implementation.
Yeah.
Yes, we just cleaned up the language.
Yeah, so we didn't adopt the ten step scale. We cleaned up the.
So maybe we should just, just say after zero six two four two G, which amends resolution five twenty-four?
That's truly what it was. It wasn't amended. Yep.
And then just get rid of that last sentence. Don't even change anything. That was it.
Anything else?
Yep.
Erica?
No.
No other corrections? Motion to approve the June eighteenth minutes?
Oh, I'll move to minutes.
Second, that was, that was for both?
Both.
Board of equalization and?
For both?
I don't know, was it just? Separate? Do them separately?
Okay, minutes of the board of equalization from the eighteenth.
Did you, did we vote? We need to vote.
Oh, excuse me. All favor the regular minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the board of equalization minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
On the consent agenda, is there anything somebody wants to pull for further discussion right after?
Um, I, I would like, I don't have any question on it, but I just think the bigger items like the skid steer purchase should be pulled. I just don't think they should be in consent agenda. But I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but.
That probably should. Steve's on waiver.
But I mean, we can leave it on there, but I would like those, I would like those bigger purchases, just we have a discussion on what the use is, what the trade, you know? Just that, just a little dialogue, but this one's fine.
Because there is a little bit of a change.
There's, yeah, there's a change.
Maybe we should, is Steve coming later today?
He's online.
I don't think he's.
I don't think he has anything on there. No.
He'll probably stop down.
Yeah, and he's online. He's online too, so.
Okay, let's pull the purchase of the skid steer from environmental for further discussion. Anything else?
If I may, Mr. Chair, when you say bigger purchases, do you have a dollar amount in, or are you just, in general, just bigger?
Just use your judgment. I mean, again, I'm not, I'm in favor. I'd just like to have a little bit of a discussion on the uses, you know, just different things.
Okay.
And it's more so maybe for the public rather than, you know, we probably have a better knowledge, but I think the public should be more aware of larger purchases.
Okay.
With that, pulling that, item three B, motion to approve the rest?
Make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Motion by Erica, second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave, further discussion?
I just, when I was reviewing the list of lakes that had public access, I didn't see Lake Eunice on there in that, on that list. So, and not, not that that matters in this instance because that's a county owned one, but it wasn't on our county owned list. And just to point out, we are, we are getting paid from the DNR now of services that we've done for years. And thanks to Teresa Embridge, who I asked about this when we had a joint powers meeting, and she said she'd look into it. I said, well, the DNR got a bunch of money this year. They certainly can pay some of their bills, so. It's not a big amount, but it's just under twenty thousand and we'll get that rather than.
Maintain it.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Wonder if Steve could come down because I thought he had an update on that skid steer.
Did he email us?
He didn't.
He did, he emailed us.
Let's move that a little later in the agenda. We'll come back to it. Commissioners, open forum. Anybody on there? Nobody did, okay? Reports and correspondence.
Mr. Chair, one thing I'd like to mention is Kerry sent out a notice to us that the city was going to discuss the marijuana use. One thing that, I don't know if they know that we are required, we are required to issue at least, what, three in Becker County? It's based on population?
Correct.
So.
We could maybe get away with two, but three, yeah.
So just maybe if anyone's going, you know, let them know. We don't have the option of not giving some out and.
Yes, I was reminded of that when I sent it out, but yes, you're, I was going to have a conversation with, with the city. You're absolutely right.
So they should, I mean, and it's my opinion, and we should have some discussion on this as a board, but how we want to limit that at some point. We should probably put it on the agenda, but I, my opinion is that if you're gonna, if we're gonna have them, I don't want, I don't want a monopoly on for some areas. So I mean, I, I would like more than, I don't know, I would support any limit on them as far as county. Now, I'm not saying we should support them, I mean, but we certainly, it's a bigger conversation, but I just don't see us limiting them in, in a way. But the board can decide that as we move forward.
And I think, I think we need to, I don't know that it's our responsibility, but somehow get word out to townships. You know, I know I've said I would, you know, go to my townships, but I have a lot of them. But I, but I think, you know, we need to make sure that everybody understands that we, we have to allow three or, you know, two to, two to three. But we don't know, you know, if the city's gonna say none, you know, potentially, then.
It's gonna push everything.
But I don't, but I don't know how that works. What if every township and the city would, you know, I don't, I don't know. There's, it's so new and nobody probably really knows, but.
And they, and they said that at AMC that they're making, they're adjusting the rules as they come across the problems because it's, it's, they put the cart before the horse. They didn't have the.
Well, similar Clay County, their ordinance that they passed, they kind of put areas where they would be allowed.
Yep.
So.
And I know we brought it up at our last comp plan meeting, that that's one of the land use areas that we do need to, to consider. So of where we, where we would allow it.
The city, the city's having a, like a meeting about marijuana use and they're putting, there's maybe putting a moratorium on it.
Well, not use, sales.
Sales, maybe used to.
I mean, used to, but.
But sales and the county, the county is required by the stat, by the state statute to off, to, to give at least, it's based on population. And we're, we're probably three that we have to, and, and that would be first come, first served. I mean, we can't, so, so if we, if we limit it, if we try to minimize it, then we're, then you're, the first, first ones come in and ask for it and, but cities can, it's, they're still, it's evolving. But cities can not allow it, but the county is going to have to allow it at somewhere. We don't, you know, that's, it's changing all the time. Back, back to other committee meetings, Lakeland, I had Lakeland Mental Health, they're, they're doing well financially. They're gonna ask for, I think they're gonna ask for a small increase in their, did they send that out? That was Lake Agacy that sent that out. Anyway, the Morehead facilities, they're in their last phase and by this fall, they're gonna be hopefully complete with that. So they're doing very well. Also had Lake, Lake Agacy Regional Library Committee, that, they're, they're building the building in Morehead. And I brought this up earlier, if you want to pass that, that's their vision of their, that's what the new building's gonna look like. So we didn't, this went to, you know, they got legislation approval to put this on the tax, so it's a tax in the city of Morehead, there's a tax that's help paying for this. Well, they, when they presented this, this was, Lake Agacy Regional Library was going to be in this building, but we never had an agreement on costs or an agreement worked out beforehand. So now we're, and I brought this up earlier, we're not necessarily, we don't have to move into that building. I mean, it depends on the price. And so Morehead's always been very, it's what we're renting now is in the lower of the library and it's very inexpensive. But just they hope that we're, hope that they don't think the Laurel is gonna pay for the whole building, you know? So there'll be some discussions on who's paying for open space, you know, who's paying for some of these areas. But I'm sure they'll come back with a reasonable dollar amount, but we haven't had that yet. So I think I told you before, when we ordered some, we authorized to spend some money on, on, on furnitures. I made it clear that we should, pending, we have a signed agreement that we can work with. I mean, so.
What's the plan with the old library building?
You know, it's the city of Morehead owned, so I don't know what their plans are. Demoing it probably and, and putting something, you know, putting something else commercial in there. But they're, I mean, they're, they have a vision and they're revitalizing that area because it's really been kind of down. And, and their vision around the, the library then is, is multi, you know, family, you know, apartments and high rises and mixed use over there. So I think it'll, I think it's gonna take a long time, but I think it'll go well. Richard and I had NRM land use, we had a lot on the agenda. We had one future tribal council, Laura Lee, what's her last name? Erickson was there. We had Mark from the forestry department from the tribal government and Dustin, Dustin Roy from. We had really good conversations. I mean, I, I hope that, and Erica and I are going up there this afternoon, hope that we can continue these good coverage, you know, these good meetings and good discussions. We do have some, on the cut that was, that was discussed, that was protested, that we've had, you know, we haven't went back there yet. Mitch, Mitch has, did the homework and there's actual videos of that, of that cut when, you know, about the diseased in that area. So it's a diseased area and I don't remember the diseases, but, so there's, there's reasons why that was chosen to be cut and we're gonna, and they, we've shared that with the tribe. So we're trying to get them behind us on that and finish that and recognizing, you know, what the issues were and move forward. And then we're, we've also asked that, you know, we develop, we work together on, I mean, we don't, we can avoid things in the forest if there's concerns up there. So we're gonna try to get a policy together and, and work for future cuts. And that, and that should be relatively just a matter of communications and we, we can avoid these issues in the future. Don't you think, Richard? Is that?
I think it was, it was pretty good. Those guys were pretty straightforward and honest. And, and if we, if, if they can come and talk to us like that, we could get, we could have better relationships.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
So hopefully this, hopefully it'll be a productive meeting this afternoon. We'll go from there.
Is it this afternoon or?
Yep.
Yes.
One o'clock. We talked about the Dunn Lakes Shelter. It's still a goal. Hopefully we can get that and keep the old one up and while the new one's being, being built. And it'll be some relocation of some things out there, but boy, I tell you, that, that area and Phil's probably seen it too. That area is so busy, that Dunn locks, the people that fish out there, it's just crazy. We went out there one night and there was people fishing everywhere. And they were catching some nice fish off from the, on Lake Sally's side, so.
Have they seen a large increase with the troll?
Oh, I mean, I, I was, if you go on Facebook and you look at your friends' posts, everyone's posting it. And we had friends over the weekend, they said, we weren't gonna wait in line to go, to get close to the troll. There's that many people waiting in line to just to get up and get a picture taken of the troll. It's crazy.
I heard that Wannigan Park had four thousand people visit it in four days.
It's.
So.
That counts them in and out, so it's probably half of that, but still, that's a lot.
Oh, sure.
It's, it's amazing what, what this, what the trolls have brought in, so.
Interesting, my daughter developed a house right there off of fifty-nine. There has been twenty hours at average park there now. And the whole time we've developed ourselves, it's been one or two.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
But I mean, it's.
It's, yeah, it's.
The local merchants are saying that it's like black pride.
Yeah. It has been a huge, huge draw. I mean.
Yeah, it is. And yeah, it was helping with the tram. You can't believe the people that come down there and just help and audit the tram even. They're just, how does this work?
Well, I think it's brought a lot of, lot of, people have been more aware of that little park then. I mean, they go there and they probably, you know, there's a lot of people that weren't aware of the amenities that are at the Dunn locks. I mean, it's a beautiful spot, so. Congratulations and hats off to the four twelve group that brought that in and, and all, and all the rest of the volunteers building them. Because that was a lot of work. And I, unfortunately, I wanted to get out there and help one day. My carpentry skills aren't very good, but I could carry wood or something.
Supposedly all, the heads and the hands and the feet were made in Denmark or wherever and brought over. So the more intricate stuff was done prior to, so. I did walk into the Wannigan Park one the day after grand opening ribbon cutting and there's a lot of people that went in there that day.
Yeah. I pulled up a couple times the one in DL and there's been so many people that we've just said, I will come back, we'll come back, you know?
Always a line.
Yeah.
Then the one on fifty-four too. It's crazy. There's cars there all the time.
Yeah. So one of the other things that we discussed at NRM was the need, the need for, right now Mitch, Mitch is doing so much time going to meetings like the Wannigan Park and the Heartland Trails, and, and he was wondering, asking for some assistance in that. And I think we're gonna, you know, look to see if, if that can expand into, maybe EDA can help us going to some of those meetings and communicating back to that. I mean, I think that's a good function for him and have to expand those because, I mean, Mitch's time is getting too thin at the forestry part of it, which is where he needs to be and, but.
Cody would be good at it too.
Yeah, he would.
Yeah, I think so.
I think Cody's a, he's a real good face for Becker County.
Yeah, I agree.
So, or, or administrator could, but I'm sure there's plenty to do right now. We're doing two positions, so. Anything else you want to add there?
Well, just that for ATV people, the Woods and Wheels have made a request for us to become a sponsor for a grant that would put some signage on these trails up here and maps because people are getting lost. I don't know if the sheriff finds anybody up there, but people are getting, I've been lost up there.
Where, which, which trails?
Well, forty-seven miles of them up there on tax forfeited land.
And they gave a map of it.
Like Smoky Hills or?
It would be a grant and aid trail then.
Any of the ones that are ATV is Smokey, is Smokey Hills, yeah. Any of the ones that are ATV. So there would be some signs so people would know where they're at and a map that you could actually find your way out of there.
And we asked the tribe, you know, what's, you know, you're at the, they're at the table and so we asked them, what are, what are your thoughts on ATV traffic? And they were, you know, generally supportive of it. So the existing trails, so I, and I stated if, if that's gonna be any connectors or any new connecting trails, I think we need to be made aware of that and go through that. But they, I think Dustin was a little hesitant. He didn't, you know, I'm sure he wants to know what his, the council thinks. But I mean, this, they, and Laura Lee was there and she seemed fairly receptive to it on existing trails. Because one of the things is there is better policing on grant and aid trails. There's some more funds available than when you can, when you are a state sponsored grant and aid trail, so. So we're moving forward with that and doing some more research. I'm sure we'll probably touch base on that today a little bit too. Did, we had the tax forfeit bill discussion. I did not make that time, but I was in, we were, we had conflicting meetings at that time. So hopefully, hopefully Mary was on that one, so we'll get some more info on that. I think that was about it unless you want to talk about the bats and the.
Well, we should. So there's a program to identify bat roosting sites, which some of these bats are roosting in trees. That's why we didn't cut any trees last.
That's a long eared bat.
A long eared bat, yeah. And they are, they're, they are very important. And so there is a program to find out where they're at and try and protect them. So if you have bats in your trees.
Are they in Evergreen Township?
Or in your Belfry.
Are you moving?
I'm lucky if they're in Evergreen Township.
Are you roosting?
I might be. If I, if he sends me back with a bat, we'll see what happens. Yeah, so they are, they eat a lot of mosquitoes. Bats are good for us. And they're very, if people don't know this, if you, we tore down a house one time, it was full of bats.
Not the, not the long eared bat?
No. Well, I didn't get to talk to them. They were, they were carrying their babies off with them. And that made me kind of sad that, you know, that we.
Homewrecker?
Well. Next time I do an old house like that, I'm gonna make sure they're done, they're gone before we do that, but.
Well, they kill a lot of mosquitoes.
They do.
They do.
I still don't like them, but.
Well, some of them are very friendly. They eat bats. Have you seen them? They look like a dog. Have you guys seen them?
I don't think that would be petters, Richard.
They're as big as a dog?
Well, they're as big as a small dog, yeah. Absolutely. They're huge. And, and people are petting them and feeding them bananas and.
And they fly?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're big.
In Minnesota?
No, they're over an acre or so.
I was gonna say.
Yeah. It's a whole nother country. Is that it, Barry?
That's, onto that, Sheriff's committee, I think everything's, I think everything's on the agenda actually, except for we did talk about space out at the current jail. For, and I'll just pass these, these are some options that we, we just want to make sure that there's room for everything. Option one is, this, this yellow spot would be a two story building. We're kind of saying that's not something we want to probably do. Just some, some other options. And we are looking at another option and we'll wait for discussion on that till later. But anyway, there's, we want to make sure if we do, we have to do the, we, we need an impound building. There's no question in some impound storage. We're trying to make sure we have room for everything. If we did want to move, again, this has a lot of, lot of moving parts in it, but these are just some designs that, that have been, different areas and different formations. Of course, the, if you also remember probation wants to be with this. And that is a state agency that they, and they want to pay rent on it. They think the, the energies between all the law enforcement is, is valuable enough that they want their, they want to be in the same location. And then also in that cold storage, there were some areas for DNR storage.
DNR and R.
Anyway, just want to keep you guys up to date. Kerry can maybe fill you in on a little bit more of the details that.
Yeah, I think it's on your report.
We just don't want to put the cart before the horse on some of this either, so.
No.
But anyway, it's good discussion where we go with it. We want to make sure that, you know, if we do transfer, we want to make sure we have the facilities here, what, what the usage to make them viable to. So I mean, more than one thing has to kind of be aligned. So that's it.
Yeah, I can go next. I had Mahoubi, you know, just one thing to note about Mahoubi is they're still looking for a property for their tiny home, homeless shelter for veterans. So just if anybody's interested and has a piece of land out in more of the rural area. I had cornerstone meeting last night. They, their bistro is now open. They're planning their grand opening for July twentieth, I believe. They are working on several fundraisers. Their gala is coming up in September, so that's, for their gala, they sell a lot of arts made by the youth. They've taken several field trips with the youth over the last month. Many of them have to do with art, quilting. They've gotten several grants for arts and culture. So lots of good stuff happening there. Had our EDA meeting. We discussed the next steps after our, this was our first meeting after our EDA workshop. So they're gonna plan a follow-up meeting with the area EDAs, just to see like what our next steps are with the information that came out of that workshop. And so Cody was gonna consult with the city and Chamber who we partnered with for that workshop. We also had just some discussion on the building, the, like what, where the impound lot is, where the extension is now and what, kind of what could we do with that building if there was additional business or something that could go in there? If, you know, or when it would ever be cleared out from the stuff that's in the, the building and the impound lot. Then we, anything else from EDA, Richard?
No, not really.
Yeah. Then we had our extension meeting. We discussed the contract, which I think is coming up probably our next board meeting. We had a lot of discussion about, you know, we used to have one point seven five four H leaders and a lot of discussion about where, where the four H program is now. And Elliot, you know, did identify that in the summertime, there is a lot of areas that they could use some additional four H instructors doing evening classes or. So there was some discussion about possibly looking at having a summer temp position for an intern in addition to the, the summer.
Fair.
Administrative help, yep. So that, that is included on the contract, but for us to discuss when they come for the discussion. I think that was an extra nine thousand dollars in the new, the new contract for that position.
That's hired and funded by Extension, correct?
Well, we would, the nine thousand dollars would be in our contract with Extension. Yep. We also did have some discussion again about the, the building and what the, the plans are for the extension, whether they're staying there or they're going to, they'll transit building. So just a little bit of discussion. And then just some.
Just on the building part of it, you know, Dive and Rescue utilizes the back part, part of the back of that building. So, I mean, there's another piece that has to fit when you, if you can move them to the new impound or the new storage area share, if that's where they'd like to be. Then that frees up that and the extension, I mean, if, if Extension moves to the fair building, because the fair seems now that they would like Extension out there and they don't have a lot of use for that back, you know, they want some part-time stuff back there, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that the Extension people are on board with them going out there, but we had, we did have the discussion. We also had the discussion of, you know, one of the reasons of considering this summer intern is, you know, Linda will be retiring someday. She's been here for forty-seven years.
Forty-seven years.
So, you know, really just kind of. So, you know, really just kinda planning for that to some degree, um, so, but just some things that they have coming up for 4H, they have their, they're planning a day camp for the, with their ambassadors at, um.
It's on.
The fair.
What day is it on?
Friday, the.
Friday, from one to three, yeah.
Um, but the, the 4H membership has been steady, and they, you know, really just wanna hope to increase the numbers through that day camp, that's kind of that marketing for, for that ages, grades one to three, one through, through three, so.
And Elliot seems like he's doing a good job of trying to get more involvement, getting younger kids involved so they could get in, get, wanna be in 4H, so, yeah, he's.
Yeah, and I don't know a lot of the background of, you know, what, you know, where we, when we had a one point seven five down to one, and, other than, what it was discussed at that meeting was, they both left at the same time, and it was a difficult time, but, seems to be going well, the membership numbers continue to rise, so.
And then, one more thing, and I, I went to Extension for, for Barry, one more thing that they talked about right away was, Ronnie Offit.
Oh, yeah.
Company, um, they do, if, if any of you guys have ever been to the fair and paid two dollars for one of those bucket of fries, that, they, they, they make those and they donate all of the profits, or all the proceeds to 4H, so, um, they thought it would be a great idea to have that at the fair, and I talked to the fair board that, that, in that same night, and they said, yeah, sure, 'cause it, it, it doesn't conflict with their food contract vendor, because it's part of 4H, so.
Yeah, I don't think they'll get it for this year.
No, no, probably not.
Just because we're.
But the fair did, well, can they get it this year? And I said, I doubt it, but, but it's a really cool idea, it's, I mean, obviously, they have to be able to come to our fair, but.
Yep.
But, yeah, it was a pretty cool idea. Anything else?
Nope, I'm done.
Yeah. I got, I had the DAC, our DAC board meeting, we also took a tour, um, to help Norman County's DAC, which is now called Inspired Inc., um, they changed, or Inspire Inc., they changed the name of it, and, 'cause we had made, we had made that, what's that, we had made that tour, what's that?
Is it a tattoo place?
Inspired, Inc., Incorporated, for those of you guys don't know what ink stands for. So, we had gone to the Hubbard County DAC and, and saw their, their facilities and so forth, and this place is amazing, it's, you walk into Ada, it's in Ada, you walk in, it looks really home, homey, it looks, like, it, it looks awesome, and they've, they've done a lot of creative things, they've added on to their building, I think four times, she said they're planning another add-on to it. Um, we also, our executive director, Sarah Hill, learned more about billing, so she's going to be able to do some billing that will help, help, um, generate more funds for our, for our DAC. Right now, in our DAC, at our board meeting, she, we are, we approved to replace the flooring in the commons area and in the, um, office areas and everything, 'cause it, it doesn't look good, so, it's gonna look a lot better, hopefully it'll make a big difference. Uh, so they're do, we're doing a lot of things to, to make our facility look modern, look inviting, kinda like, we wanna, we wanna kinda get to the point where when you walk into it, like you walk into the new food shop, and it's like, whoa, you know, that's what we want it to be eventually, so. Um, and our, she's, our executive director's doing a great job, she's, and we're getting, we've got some, a few more day clients that we sent from last month, and we got a couple more residential ones, so things are getting better, uh, we just gotta keep plugging away, 'cause we gotta make it, keep even getting more, more, uh, positive atmosphere in our DAC. John and I had a board meeting, um, they talked, most of the stuff they talked about was the stuff they've talked about previously, so I won't go through all of it, but they are getting timbers, um, they're getting new timbers and new gravel put underneath the north bleachers in the grandstand area, so that should, that'll be done before the fair, they're also gonna pour a slab on the, uh.
By the flagpole.
By the flagpole, um, that's gonna be where the handicap accessible bleachers will be, but they, but they won't be there until the fair is over, so they're going to make a, some sort of ramp that'll go on to that slab for people in wheelchairs and, and, to make it handicap accessible for those people on that slab, anyway, and then eventually the bleachers will be there, too, after the fair. And then they're also, uh, again, going to rent, they got rid of all the bleachers on the south end, they're going, because they're not safe, and they're going to rent portable bleachers that are in the back of a trailer, and then they just fold out, and, so they should be pretty good on that. Also, too, uh, the FFA, uh, FFA, Tresha Mitchell and Alyssa Mitchell came in from Detroit Lakes and Fraser, and they're going to re, they're gonna fix up the, uh, what is it, the children's barn, they're gonna paint it, they're gonna get all the pretty paint off, paint it, they're gonna take down that fence, they're gonna clean up the area around, they're making it look a little better, so, they are doing that, and then, one thing that, um, they wanted me to make sure, and I'll, I haven't talked to Steve about it yet, but I'll tell him right now, is, or, 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 Steve or Todd, is they want, they would like to make sure that the STS workers are available Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to help with removal of garbage and cleanup from the, after the grandstand events, mainly, 'cause they're, 'cause there'll be a rodeo Wednesday and Thursday, and then derby Friday, Saturday.
One thing they do at, like, high school games, too, is remind the people to grab stuff around before they, you know, have the announcer say, you know.
Yeah.
Please grab, you know, 'cause it's, it gets to be a lot, and if you're reminded, most people will grab something, throw in the garbage.
They will. And then John and I had transit, um, uh, Kevin said that the ridership is up twelve point two seven percent year-to-date, so, that's good. Um, one thing that was interesting that he talked about, I thought was interesting, I'm a little strained sometimes, I think things are interesting, but, um, the state hired a consulting group to look at working with Lyft and Uber, working with transit, um, obviously that really doesn't affect us here in Becker County, 'cause I think we might have one Lyft driver in Detroit Lakes, that might be it for the whole county, um, so, it, it isn't something that is gonna affect us, but it does affect, you know, bigger urban areas, could possibly. Uh, they also, too, the state is pushing for electric buses by twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three?
Twenty, or twenty, or, I'm sorry, twenty thirty.
I was gonna say, we're, we're, a little late.
So, anyway, the, the, more, Kevin gave us an example of Morris has an electric bus, and the big problem with it is it only, the charge only lasts six hours, and all of the transit shifts in, in here, and in Morris, too, are nine-hour shifts, so the person would have to come back, get another bus, and then go back out on their, or shift, or they'd have to change shifts, well, if you change shifts now, that might require more employees, that might be an issue, 'cause they're short employees now, you know, drivers now.
But one of the big issues with that is the funding.
Yeah.
Right now, we're short on funding and just replacing their standard buses.
Yes.
When you double the price of them or more, how are they gonna fund?
How are they gonna fund that, yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, time might bring us to that point, but you don't, I don't, I don't like putting deadlines on it, because it, we might not be ready for it.
Might not be ready, no.
It might be twenty forty, you know, so.
It might come eventually, but it.
Especially the far, you know.
Six years.
The farther north you go, the more, the more it requires, the more battery juice it sucks up using, I mean, I, we have an electric car, and in the winter times, um, the battery life, you, you decrease your battery life because of the cold weather, it just draws more juice, and, and you, the heater draws a lot.
It must be, uh, worse, probably have a wood stove in there.
So, it's, I mean, I think they have their place, I would like vehicles have their place, but it certainly is not something that should be, you know, unless you're, you're situation, so.
So, also, too, uh, year-to-date, our, the budget is good, he's right on budget, um, the only problem with budget next for two thousand twenty-five is, he doesn't, we don't really, aren't really sure yet where the wages are gonna be at, um, the state may not cover, may not be ready to give more money, so, we might have to figure out some things in twenty twenty-five, if we're, are we gonna, are we gonna, are we gonna fund it a little bit, or are we gonna cut some routes, so we might, that might come sometime later on in the year in twenty twenty-five.
But, that, it looks like the state and federal monies will be up about two hundred forty-nine thousand.
Yeah.
So, they're saying they might not cover something, but they're giving you more money.
They're giving you more, and the problem with, with his budget, too, is you can only move, once you have it set, you can, I think you can only move ten percent to a different spot. Yeah, so that's an issue, you know. Do you have anything else on transit, or?
No, they're just going through, uh, state audits and.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Drug audits, federal audits, state vehicle maintenance audits, and everything seems to be going pretty well on that, so.
No news on the transit building?
No.
No, but still, the federal government still is not fast.
darn government workers?
Uh, Barry and I had a courthouse meeting.
I forget that one.
Did you talk about courthouse?
No.
So, we, we actually, he can probably tell more, because I was late, I've never been late to a meeting in my life, I don't think. So, anyway, uh, we, we met with Tessa, our DDA consultant, and we talked about our human resources position, how it should look, um, should main, where should maintenance be at, and we decided that maintenance shouldn't be a part of HR, right now, we've kinda thought maintenance is working almost independently, really, sort of, and, and, uh, we had, we'd also had come up a few other ideas, and I can let Carrie, don't wanna take her thunder away, so she can talk about that if she wants, so, but I, not right now.
You're talking building, building maintenance.
Building maintenance, yeah. Then, then we also talked about, uh, the generator that isn't, that doesn't cover the whole courthouse when the power goes out, 'cause the power went out in, in the street the other day, or, well, went out here, but caused by the street. We really didn't, uh, really didn't come up with a great plan, because each plan that is, would get power to the whole courthouse is really expensive, so, I don't know, we really don't have a, I mean, we, we, we can function, we just, there's just some areas that don't have power, like Mary's office doesn't have lights, and.
Do you need lights, Mary?
Yeah, and I, and then she said the air conditioning work, I said, well, open the windows, she says, well, they don't open.
The cheapest, the cheapest route here would be, we've got capacity from the generator with jail, but it's gonna cost more to pull that over and to just have a separate generator, but Brent, you know, estimated that would be about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand, so.
Yeah.
Um, we just kinda laid it on the shelf and let it.
Or, the other, other option would be to put a new generator out here, and then run it into the, run the cave cables into the basement, which would not, probably cost quite as much, but it wouldn't be cheap.
That was a two fifty.
That was a two fifty-three, and then the cables coming across, yeah, so, I don't know.
We did, we did talk about, uh, human, um, resource position.
Yeah.
Um, seeing if there was any other, we were just kinda brainstorming, Tessa was helping with our size county, what, what other counties did, and, um, basically, um, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically, it's kinda, with that, that lead spot, there's really not a lot of, I mean, choices that we, that, that sounded very good, I mean, um, so, we're gonna, but, but it's when you have that opening, you wanna look at those, any other options?
Yep.
But we did not find, and Tessa didn't have any recommendation to do anything, than what we, what we are gonna do.
Anything else? Nope, that's it, I'm done talking.
Good. Uh, let's go through mine quick, I probably come over watershed district, just a little update, uh, looks like Buck's Mill should be ready for bidding in the spring of twenty-five and construction hopefully in.
For the dam?
For the dam, yep. And then, uh, we had a discussion on the MOU with this, two watersheds in the county, that's on our agenda later, covered, right, or transit, fair board, we had highway committee, Richard and I, we had, most of that is on the agenda today, and I think everybody's seen the annual report, it's online, if you wanna look at that, or you can get a hard copy.
For?
Highway.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Uh, and then we had some dis- discussion on RT Vision software permitting and POs, and, and they're gonna meet with IT and see how, how it'll work out, and, so. We had negotiations, we discussed that in closed session today, Richard and I had environmental, environmental, most of that's on, was on the agenda, have a little discussion, a little bit on the skids there, and I think we had, uh, discussed that reuse building grant and what we're gonna have to save it for, if we get the grant, what information we need to accept it.
No, you got everything. One thing, I forgot to mention, Lake Agassiz Regional Library was gonna ask out, what, one point seven seven percent increase of their, so, under, so, very, and, and that budget is, was still a deficit budget, so, um, very inexpensive, and then, Richard, we should probably mention, too, the, the, um, rack committee's working, I, I wanna give a shout-out to the rack committee, 'cause I think they're, they got some projects now, and they can, they can really get moving on, uh, the Toad, I had a, I got a call in, about the Toad Mountain project, um, wanted to make sure, um, maybe the board can, can chime in when they want, the Toad Mountain project, if we move forward with it, is a non-motorized area, and I think I had a call, and people didn't realize that, and that alleviated a lot of concerns about people, if we did move forward with this, that that was non-motorized, and that we were not planning to do a marina on the lake, that would be a, you know, a not, you know, more of a, and we don't know what our plans are, but it's not, not motorized, that's the, that's where the grant money's for, so, I just thought I'd mention that to people who are concerned about that on the, on that area and that lake, that this is not a, um, we wanna make this, if, again, we haven't decided for sure, but this is a non-motorized area and a non, non-marina lake access.
Yeah, totally, I've, I've had several conversations with people also about Toad Mountain, and I'm going to, the, the town board has had concerns just 'cause of the, you know, loss for them of, um, tax, property tax money, so I'm, I am going to the town board meeting on Monday. Do you wanna go with me, Steve?
I think the total, total revenue on taxes was either six or eight thousand, and the township will only have a portion of that, too.
Yeah, yep.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Moving on to appointments, we have resolution zero seven two four one D, and that is to appoint the new assessor. Lee, Lee, why don't you come up and sit down and introduce yourself?
Okay. Hello?
Welcome, Lee.
Yeah, welcome. Tell us a little, what about yourself?
Uh, my name's Lee Breckie, I've been an assessor for quite a few years, I just came from, uh, I was in the county assessor in Woodinah County before coming here, um, so I have a lot of experience with, uh, the field of work, uh, would you like, I live in the county, I've lived here for, since, well, oh-seven, probably, my wife is originally from Detroit Lakes, so.
Good.
Well, welcome.
Have you seen the trails yet?
I have seen three of the trails.
Good.
Yeah, you have a resolution one D to appoint.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution one D.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie, welcome and thanks.
Thank you very much.
Isn't there an oath or something that we have?
Yeah, he did do an oath.
I did that one.
It started yesterday, we did have him do that, yes.
Um, Mr. Chair, with regards to this, I, I just wanted to just update you a little bit, too, Nancy is still here, so we're looking at, um, phasing her out, if, well, that sounds terrible, but, she'll be here for part-time into July here, and, uh, as Lee had come into this position, he had a planned vacation next week, so Nancy will be on site next week, so we are working on a schedule, and, uh, he came on yesterday, so, again, just hoping that the transition will go well, and information sharing, and that the staff will be supported, so we're working on that schedule as well.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee, and, and thank Nancy, too, um, for her, for her assistance in this transition time.
She's been very helpful.
Yeah.
They all have, so.
Good.
We're, we're going and learning a lot, if I can get into the computer.
Yeah.
Gotta get IT, but they're doing great.
Thanks for choosing me, Charlie, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four is just, uh, letter of support for Wantigan and phase one development, we had several options to choose from, and Carrie, some of the carries, she kinda picked out the best, and any one, and I think that, I signed it earlier, and then you have to sign it today, and.
Oh, I think you're just on there, yeah.
Yeah.
But we'll make sure it gets sent, yes. Do you need a motion?
I, we can.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the letter of support.
Motion by Erica, the letter of support for Wantigan Park, or a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion?
I just wanna congratulate them, I mean, it's a, it's like it's going along well, and, and, it's awesome.
They raised a lot of private monies and.
Yeah.
Really seeking grants and wherever they can, so.
I just want to congratulate them, I mean, it's a, it looks like it's going along well, and, and.
It is. It raised a lot of private monies and.
Yeah.
Really seeking grants and wherever they can. Anything else? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I want to do the skidster.
County, your minister, Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have several, just very quick topics, but just a reminder of the joint governance meeting that's next week. Normally, that would be prior to our board, but due to the holiday, it's on the 9th. It's at the DL, I believe it's middle school. So that is at 7:00 AM, July 9th. Wanted to bring to your attention, and I had talked about this earlier, we had two resolutions, the ATV and the marijuana in public resolutions. When we went back and looked at those, and it came to our attention that they both had the same resolution number on. So I had some conversations with our ordinance, sorry, I'm saying resolutions ordinance. When I had some conversations with our county attorney, he suggested that I just bring it to your attention. What we ended up doing was the earlier one, which was the marijuana ordinance, that will stay with the number 21. What we also found when we looked at that is that it's by statute, the clerk of the board needs to also sign off on that. We've used the county administrator as the clerk generally in signing of those, and he's no longer here. So what we were planning on doing, or what the direction of the county attorney was, again, to bring it to your attention, we have a discussion, reratify it, and then re-signing of it. Same thing with the ATV, again, it wasn't signed off on properly, but that one will also have, it'll have the number 22 number, just to clean all of that up. That was his suggestion. So, any questions about that?
You need more, more motion?
You need more?
Yes, yes, I would like to reratify both of those ordinances, as I've stated. We did put a little bit of a sentence in the marijuana, just indicating that it's coming back to board for reratification on the marijuana one from 23.
I make a motion to rerat, to re.
Ratify?
Ratify, thank you. Both of those motions.
I'll second.
Both those.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
Yeah, sorry, I was saying.
Yeah, I'm not doing that anymore.
You have a motion, but a second?
I'll second, yep.
Second by Erica. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I, I just think if we make motions on something like this, I think they should be on the agenda. I mean, I think it should be, it should have been not just under reports, it should be on the agenda just for.
Just for review?
I mean, just so we have it listed.
In front of you, okay.
So Peggy, you could put that in the minutes, the motion number, or the ordinance number. But yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So I just wanted just to let you know that last week I spent part of a day out at the Mirth Building and also at the Transfer Building. Steve was the host of that, and that was just really helpful for me to walk through and take a look and see how things operated. So thank you to Steve. It's already been mentioned that we're meeting with the tribe today, per their invite at 1:00 today, and one of the main topics on there is that, that logging effort. It's an informal meeting that they have actually scheduled for today. Normally, they meet on Mondays, but it was scheduled for today, so both Commissioner Jepson and Commissioner Nelson will be attending, along with myself and some staff. If some of you have walked through the administrator's office, that's getting a facelift, but I, the reason I bring that up is because I want it known that through the repurposing in our, what we do in the county, that we were able to repurpose cabinets for that at a very low cost. So we are doing what we're wanting other members of the community to do. So it'll be at a very low cost, and then we're doing the refacing and the painting and such with this internal staff maintenance that we do have. We've completed mediation. It was interesting last week, those of the mediation are the negotiation team. We had four bargaining units, all at the same time for mediation on the same day. It was a busy day.
Yes.
But we'll talk more about that in closed session, but we did go through those mediation sessions last week. And then we do have one additional mediation scheduled this, this month with an additional bargaining unit, so hoping to, we're, we're moving forward. Interviews are scheduled for the hazardous waste position that Sandy had retired from. I believe that's next week, is that right, Peggy? Next week or the week after? It's coming up here. As well as, we also had a part-time custodial position that was vacant, and the interviews will go forward with that. So again, we're still running very low numbers on open positions, and conversation with the sheriff, I think it was yesterday. You're close to full staff, or are full staffed?
Very close.
Very, very close. So that's really nice to see.
I've heard of some resignations today coming in.
I have not.
There's one vacancy for an assistant county attorney that is being posted that we'll recruit for. Just one other mention, as a couple of the commissioners had talked about with the human resource director position, we did have those discussions with, with Tessa, our consultant. We also had previously some discussions with her, and this will be coming up very, fairly quick into the future here, with some career letters. And I just got messages from her yesterday that she is working on some of our departments that we've talked about with some career letters within, and so those recommendations will be coming back to the board, you know, as well. So that does affect, I don't know, three or four departments as well. Going back to the human resource director, the other part that maybe we haven't talked about is that as we were reviewing this position and just having some discussions with department heads, et cetera, there seems to be a gap in our county as far as a safety component or the management of our, our safety programs, just in general, across the board. So really looking at who could fulfill those duties, whether that, that would fit under this human resource director that we hire, or at least that individual would have an integral part, you know, in that, and then removing the maintenance department from with, under that. I think that's been along, I don't know exactly when that was put under there, but when we talked to Tessa, she couldn't think about any other counties that are structured that way, so it makes sense.
The safety was, is under administration, right?
It's currently, yeah, I think it defaulted to administration currently.
But we do hire a consulting firm that helps us with safety, too.
Yes, yes. But I think there's quite a bit more, I think just from departments, I think each department is doing some individualized things, but I think just really looking at our processes across the county and, and trying to centralize some of that, I think would be helpful. And I think that's.
So, question, Carrie.
Oh, yes.
I think I got this right. So the, the human resource position would be in charge of reporting some, some of the safety and, and, and keeping track, and then somebody else could be the person they would.
Coordinator, yeah, and I think we.
Coordinate.
Yeah, I, I think we could take a look at all of that and just really see, you know, what works. You know, right now, in, in the position, you know, like anything to do with Workman's Comp, for instance, and tracking all of that, I, I have done all of that. But, and then some, you know, other departments are, you know, employees are calling the hotline and, and reporting that, and then on the backend, I'm getting the reports and the questions and the follow-ups and those types of things. But when I say safety, you know, I think of different departments, maybe, I always call them, the term I give them, like, is a near miss, you know, maybe there was a safety concern, or, or some bigger project, safety in general for all of our buildings. I, I think just having a better streamlined system of when something's happening in one area, having the committee come back and review that, and, and just really taking a look at maybe what we could do differently or better, just to continue to improve.
Excuse me, and I mentioned Carrie earlier, what we're really missing is, we used to have fairly active accident review, safety committee, where basically there's preventable, non-preventable, it's, is it reoccurring to that same employee? What additional training should that employee have to eliminate some of them?
Do you remember that AMC speaker that spoke on safety and how, how they reviewed everything, I mean, how, how much that impacted everything? You know, we, so when, if we do get this established, I think we should reach out to AMC and.
Yes.
Review that, review that process.
Yes, and I think there's some really good models out there. I just think that it's just kind of went independently into departments, you know, like when there's deer hits or vehicle hits and those kinds of things, again, departments are, you know, doing the reporting and such, but, you know, other departments maybe aren't hearing about it till later, or maintenance isn't hearing about, you know, vehicle replacements. It's just, I think, a breakdown, just in general.
And there's many, many areas where you can prevent the next accident by learning from the previous.
Exactly.
That's what, that's what the goal is.
Years ago, because I served on it prior to being commissioner, and it really was helpful in certain cases where same individuals have the same type of accident, two or three a month, you know? So what, and you got additional training, it's still in help, so there, you know, there's other alternatives out there, but, no, I think it's very helpful.
Yeah, I think just looking for capacity of where this could fall, and, and just, next, I believe it's next week, when I meet with the department heads, they've asked for just some examples of forms and potentially going forward we could use. We're gonna start there, just having that discussion with the department heads, and really just talk about who should be on the safety committee. And again, I think some meetings have happened in the last couple of years, but it's not been consistent, so I, I think that there's some work to do.
Who, who do we have on the safety committee? I don't remember. We have.
I'd have to go back and look.
I don't remember. No, they hardly ever meet. No, yeah, no, they, yeah.
As far as the commissioner.
Yeah.
Because we lost the kind of the structure.
Or maybe we just don't have anybody on there.
Well, there's.
I think somebody was assigned, I just, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head who.
Yep.
But yeah, some work to do. And then I just had a very brief conversation with IT Judy, and just asking how many on-calls, you know, they're getting, and it's a handful. And then I know there were some questions about shared systems, other counties, and the Zerker system seems to be the main system that we're the host for, for other counties. And the main, I was just trying to get an understanding of exactly what RT is doing. And they're really responsible for the VPN, for other agencies coming into that shared system. And there is some advantages for us hosting, and we've hosted for a very long time, is what I understand, that system. And the advantage for our law enforcement, et cetera, that use the system is that they don't have to do the VPN, they have ready access to that. So, again, a few calls, but I think that that's something that I think the board has indicated that they would like, you know, continued watch on the need and the continued need for that.
Yeah, I think, you know, if that's something we're going to continue, I think, do the other counties pay anything for?
There's a joint powers agreement, is what Judy said. I don't know the dollar amount, but that is my understanding.
So I think that's.
But not for, it wouldn't be necessarily for the on-call piece.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but system-wise, yeah.
Yep.
But the on-call piece as well.
Yeah.
We have to also recognize that we are probably on the receiving end of some of those benefits on, for other counties, when we're not the host, so we might want to be careful what we ask for. In other areas, we do, we do receive benefits, I know, from, from Clay County with the, was it caseworks and.
Mm-hmm. They're hosts for that, yeah.
I mean, so.
And that's just generally how government has, you know.
Yeah, kind of.
Worked, and you're right.
Help, help your, help. But anything, again, shout out to Judy, she's kept us, our computer system's fairly safe, and I think I got a nasty gram from my, my supervisor, it said I wasn't up to date. I completed my trainings now, so I'm up, up to code.
I tried, but I can't get it, so I.
I couldn't get it on, on my phone, I had to go on my, on my iPad.
I couldn't go on iPad.
I must be tech savvy, because mine are all.
But, you know, she gave examples of counties and the increased attacks on, on government agencies, I mean, it's, the cyber criminals are not getting less creative, they're getting more creative. And I think that, you know, double, the dual verification is going to be more standard on everything that we try to get into from now on, and unfortunately, it's, but if we lose, I mean, you, you go to, you get hacked, and it's a big deal. I mean, you, I, you know, there's car dealerships have been hacked nationwide, and they can't get into their programs. I mean, it, it's, it's, and it's been weeks, and I think, you know, more, Minnesota State Moorhead was, I'm sure they were hacked, I never did hear the story on that, but, I mean, it's significant, so we have to, and, and individuals are the, are, we are the weakest link, you know, so we have to be diligent on, on not falling for those spoofs and phishing, and so.
And I think it's just gonna get, I mean, they're just gonna get more savvy. I mean, we see a huge uptick in phishing emails and, and different things on, usually the week of payroll, because I know I got asked several times yesterday, people were getting emails from me saying, we need your account number and things like that.
Right.
There, I was getting calls and asking if I was sending, was not, so.
That's good that they're calling.
Yes. So I definitely think the message is getting out there, that people are becoming more and more aware of those things.
Yeah, good. See what I scored on my assessment.
Well, good, I'm glad you got, you, you did that. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Just one more thing Judy had mentioned.
Oh.
Our emails are all gonna change by.
Yes.
What was it, 20, middle of next year?
It was 2025, I thought Judy said.
What are they?
They're gonna change the .gov.
We don't, yeah, and we don't have an option, we'll be switching over.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Jim?
Do you want to do Steve first?
Do you want to do Steve first?
Where did, where did you put Steve in the agenda for that?
Skidster.
I'll go after Jim.
Good morning.
Morning, Jim.
First item for your consideration is a resolution adopting a policy for, we call them driver feedback signs or radar speed signs. We discussed this in highway anyways, we get a number of requests, usually from like associations and things like that, for areas where we have what we call speed zones. Those are roads which have reduced speed limits below the state statute of 55 miles an hour that had a traffic study, and it's been reduced, and, and there's problems with speeding sometimes in those areas, and then the sheriff gets calls, we get calls, but anyways, we have purchased some speed signs that we move around on occasion to these problem areas, but some of these folks would like a full-time sign displayed on the road. And one group in particular had raised some funds and asked if they would consider, you know, a donation or contribution, so we thought a policy would be in order to, you know, these people that make those requests have some skin in the game for, you know, these signs. So we decided that splitting costs on the speed signs would be, we thought that would be favorable, we would have some expense, and they would have some expense in it. It would save us money, I think, in the long run, you know, sheriff doesn't have to spend as much time out there with his people, and those signs are effective. And I had some points in the policy, you know, on, on how we would select those locations and, and that cost participation and things like that, and so we're, want to discuss it here to see if you're open to that, that policy, and if you have any suggestions or any adjustments to the policy. But essentially, the, the main points would be cost share, 50% for the private requesting entity, and 50% for the county. County would maintain the signs. Signs typically have a life of about 10 years, and, you know, sign wears out, or if it ever gets damaged in an accident or, or something like that, that wouldn't be collected through insurance or whatever, sometimes there's no cars there, but then both agent, or both groups would have to, you know, fund the replacement of that sign.
I'm, I'm just not sure yet. I'm not sure this policy, the couple of concerns I had was, do the groups have any liability then, beings they've requested and put the sign, is that, do they put themselves at liability? If someone gets, say, the worst-case scenario, someone gets killed and hits one of those signs?
No, we would be the owners of that sign. And I say we, we install them based on, you know, our engineering process for sign locations and that, so it would be like any of our signs, if we would vehicle hits it and that, you know, we're, we're not liable, essentially. I mean, we could be sued, but they would go through that process, and generally, we have that liability covered.
But anyone, I, I, I mean, I think someone could be sued. I don't know if they'd win, but I think they could be listed as a, in the lawsuit if someone contributed to a sign to, also, whether they win or not, but, and the other, the other thing is, these non-government, you know, these, these private groups, and would they have, would they feel that they have ownership of it, you know, of? It just, I don't know, I just, I just, you know, you run through scenarios in your mind how the positives and negatives, and I think, I don't, the townships.
Would we see an increase in it, in that maybe more people would want to do this? Would we see an increase in it, in that maybe more people would want to do this?
Well, I think that they do slow people down. Sheriff, do you, are you, what do you think of these signs?
Well, I, yeah, they do.
I, I think one of the.
You know, once they're gone, they're kind of, people forget about it, but I've had numerous requests in different areas.
Yeah, I think that requests are getting more and more all the time, and, you know, it's, they're, for just two, it's ten grand, and. Be nice to have, if somebody wants them, that if they contribute something for it, I think that's great. And these will be, would be taken down during the winter, so it'd prolong the life after. And I think the ones that you're looking at purchasing also has repair parts for them, where some of them, they're throwaway if they go to heck, so.
I, I would like it if we move forward with this, that if the sign is, if the sign is ran, run over or destroyed, that, that the agreement then ends, and you, and then they have to start a new one, you know, type of, you know, that would probably be better than, than sending repair costs, you know, you, you can't, you know, what, how are you going to do that? I would just say, if, if in the meantime, at any time this is destroyed or is not working, then the, then our agreement to keep it there would, you'd have to start new, unless you can, you know, unless it's just a cheap part, you know, but I, I think you want to protect yourself from what we're required, you know, what we're obligated to do then, kind of thing, but.
They do record stuff too, so you can get statistics off of them too.
Phil's, Phil's got something in Lakeview and.
So we ordered Traffic Logic signs in two thousand and eighteen, or speed signs, we attach them right to, I move them around each week during the summer, they don't work in the winter because of the batteries that's too cold, but we put them on our speed limit signs, we just have a bracket that we slide it on, I just move it around the township, about six or eight locations where I get people complaining about speeds. There's always somebody that goes sixty in a thirty mile an hour speed zone, but on average, people are driving the speed limit, on average, or a mile or two over, like I said, on average. When you went for six years, it hasn't changed anywhere. On average, people drive the speed limit. There are things that you can do, like, what I found out early is, I, I let, like, the speed limit's forty, I'll go to, I'll let it go to seven, but you can reduce that, because people are trying to get a high number on there, I think.
I thought it was a contest.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, but you can, you can turn it off, and you can get all the statistics, and I, I've turned it off and not had it on, but it's collecting data, like you said, Richard, and no difference. But generally, what I've found is, over time, that person that's saying, oh, people are coming by here, the bus is coming by, and they say, somebody's going by doing sixty. Yeah, there is one person coming by doing sixty. Usually at night, I can tell when they are driving, when they are speeding, but on average, on our roads, Lake Melissa, Lake Sally, on average, they're not speeding. But Traffic Logic is the one we use, I don't know if there's a, there's a pull behind sign, but ours, it's on a bracket, you're just hanging on, I gotta charge the batteries, batteries go dead after a while, we paid thirty-five hundred, I think, for the signs for, for six years, the batteries are starting to fail a little bit now. The same kind you guys got on County Six, West of Highway Fifty-Nine.
Yeah, township even puts one on County Twenty-Two down there in Shore.
Yeah, I got permission from, put it on County Twenty-Two just because that.
And I got a bracket right next to my driveway, and it's there, and people go by, you look at it, and most of them are within.
And where you place it is really important too, because if you place it in an odd spot, people don't know what the speed limit is, that's why we tried to put them on the speed limit sign, it's awareness, it's not enforcement, because there's nothing we can do about it. We do gather the data, it's interesting data, but it hasn't changed in our area.
What's, Lord's wishes on the resolution to just.
I think that's one wordage, that sign replacement due to unreparable failure by whatever cause would require the cost participation of both parties at the same initial rate, might, it kind of states it, but.
We could say it, it ends the agreement, and a new agreement will, will begin with the replacement.
Probably that might, wordage might be all right.
Yeah, we can do that.
With that change, uh.
One other thing I'd like to end, I think it's, does it say in here, require, the criterion, it should probably be in there, the, the county can reserve the right to deny any and all.
Yeah.
I mean, it, I mean, so if.
Yeah.
Something happens, we can deny any and all requests.
I think that's why I put it, it has to be recommended by an engineer, yeah, it would generally be me, but, you know, a consulting engineer could do it, you know, and then we could review that.
But if it's recommended, I mean, and we, you know, say we don't have monies, at some point, I still, we have to put a li, I mean, we can't have five thousand of these sitting around the county, I mean, there has to be, there has to be a limit, don't you?
Yeah, there, well, there's number four, says adequate funding by the county is available, that would be one of the conditions.
So.
Which actually.
Number three, three.
Number three, three, yeah. Second three.
But I, I think the, I think the, I think, I would like that in there if that's acceptable, that the county reserves the right to deny or any and all. With that, I'll make most.
You could get some requests that are completely way out of.
Even if they meet the other criteria, so, but with that change, I'll make most to approve the policy.
I'll second that.
Most my Barry.
Second.
Second my Richard, excuse me. Further discussion, hearing now in all, if there's a high.
Hi.
Was that one E?
That was one E, I think.
It is one E.
Yeah.
Okay, and you had.
All right, next item is a purchase request for one of these speed signs. We've had one that is on the shelf now that has failed, and we would like to have purchased two more signs. We reviewed four different brands and styles, and we've come up with the recommended one here from Mid-American Signal, which is a fifteen-inch sign, and like I said, at finance, this one is rebuildable if a, a component fails, like a light board or things, whereas the other ones that we have looked are used, if they, if they burn out, we just essentially have to throw them away and then purchase a whole new unit, so we thought this would be the better sign and better value for us.
Motion on the request for?
Then one, I'll just, common funding will be split between Highway and the Sheriff's Department, they've agreed to participate in the cost of the sign.
I'll make a motion to purchase those two signs.
Most my Richard.
Second.
Second.
I just want to just clarify one thing, these are two signs that you get, that we are, that we are going to own, and these are nothing to do with.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions, discussions, hearing now in all, if there's a high.
Hi.
All right.
If someone wanted to, I mean, you could use one of these signs also though for.
Yeah.
For one, but we are purchasing upfront, and if they want to, falls within your, the policy, you can.
Correct, yep.
Next item is a agreement, BNS, BNSF Railway has approached us about improving the crossing on Washington Avenue just north of Highway Ten. They were asking us if we would be interested in sharing costs on the new concrete surface at a rate of fifty percent on that. This is a pretty good deal for us, normally if we made this request, we would have to pay a hundred percent of the cost, but they're going to do their track adjustments, then we would share the cost of the new concrete placements. We would also be responsible for the cost of the transition zone where we blend paving the asphalt to the concrete crossing service, and during those repairs, we would also have to pay for the, the day of flagging during that operation, which is approximately a thousand dollars. But estimated cost for the concrete is a hundred and ninety-two thousand, paving and the other will probably, would significantly less, you know, maybe in that five to ten thousand dollar range. We would reimburse this or pay for this with, using our state aid funds, since this is a state aid road.
Motion on resolution one F.
I'll make a motion.
Motion my Richard, I'll second that. Further discussion?
Just for the, for the price, for the price that they're going to quote it, and they're getting the bids, and it's their project then, right?
They do their own work, yeah, and that's what their estimate is for, per foot, they have an eight hundred dollar per foot charge, and that's for two crossings there, you know, there's two tracks, so.
Okay, so are we authorizing a dollar amount today?
Fifty percent of the.
Uh, I guess if you could authorize the fifty percent for the participation of the agreement, and then the other work, then we will solicit quotes for the paving, and then hire the flagging from, through BNSF.
I mean, I think we should probably authorize the payment of it now, or, because we're, we're obligated if we're not, so.
Yeah.
If that would include it in that motion.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm fine with it.
With the change, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
The third item, or fourth item for your consideration is an agreement with MnDOT to do maintenance repairs on the Sioux Pass Bridge near Wefest. We have a bearing that's been moving, they will plan to come in and jack up the bridge and replace that bearing, and then while they're there, they'll do routine maintenance of cleaning the joints, resealing the joints, and sealing the concrete and barrier walls. Estimated cost on this is twelve thousand dollars, and it will be billed through a master partnership work order agreement, which is included with this.
Are we liable for that expense?
Yeah, this is our bridge, and we'll be paid for it again with our state aid funds.
You know, it probably should read in there that estimated cost is.
Twelve. Not to exceed twelve thousand.
I mean, I don't, yeah, we can go higher than that, but I mean, it just, make it clear that we are, that we're paying for that.
Yeah, correct, yep.
Otherwise, motion.
Motion?
Motion to approve one G.
I'll second.
Most my Barry, second my Richard, further discussion, they're going to do this, they're going to close it down at Wefest.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fiction, the tunnel's open.
No, I think it's a very good project, because I don't know if that concrete's ever been resealed.
I don't think so, no, we do flushing and that.
Yeah, flushing, but not actually putting some sealant on that concrete, so.
That's County Road Twenty-Two.
Twenty-Two.
Yeah, we might get an uptick at Wefest, being some Moon Dance Jam's national act of now not, not coming.
No. Further discussion, hearing now in all, if there's a high.
Aye.
Aye.
And then finally, nothing for your approval, but more for information, this is the annual highway cost report, I present this to you every year, it's required by state statutes that you get an update on all expenditures through the Highway Department that goes to their roads, a very detailed breakdown, actually, the first few pages are probably the most important, you know, overview of it shows us the, the county construction projects that we did in two thousand and twenty-three, and then the maintenance and those costs and expenditures, so. I guess the big highlights were, it was a normal construction year, but the highlight was the completion of the highway building, which, as you recall, we dedicated four and a half million of our state aid funds to help fund that, so. This will be placed online, and I think you have a copy electronically, if you care to have a hard copy, we can make those for you as well.
You should probably have a couple of hard copies in the, in the administration or the front, just to.
Sure.
There'd probably be a couple, couple people that would like to see one, I, I know a former commissioner Knutson always likes to read through, through the.
Yep.
Highway report. Thank you to the staff that's worked on this, this, and this is no small undertaking, and thanks, thank everyone for their hard work on it.
Yep.
And you, Jim.
Anything else, Jim?
Nope, unless you have any questions, I'll just say that all the paving work on Forty-four and Forty-seven and Forty-two, and the shouldering work is all done, unfortunately, we couldn't get the stripper in before Fourth of July, but those roads are open for travel this weekend, and they should notice the improved ride out there.
And the regrading on Thirty-four and originally the widening is kind of held because the contractor is dealing with what weather.
Yep, so it looks like Thirty-four work, grading work will be moved into August more, and then in three Z, they've started full force there, they removed all the pavement, and they're doing the underground utilities now.
Moving on, thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Take a five-minute break.
You want to do Steve first?
Pardon? Excuse me, forget about you, Steve, come on up.
Great, Mr. James.
Good morning, Steve. Good morning, Steve.
We had a purchase request to purchase a new Skid steer that's going to be replacing the one that we have out at our recycling facility, that one has about seven thousand five hundred hours on it right now, and we did get two quotes, one was for John Deere, and one was for Caterpillar, I got updated quote from John Deere yesterday, so they're really close, the only difference is that John Deere's a lighter machine, and we talked about that in committee, and does anybody want to see the updated quote?
No, definitely not, as long as it's close, I mean.
There's about twelve hundred dollars difference roughly, yeah.
This updated quote is for fifty-three thousand, one sixty-six and seventy cents, and we talked about it in committee, that Caterpillar's a heavier machine, a little more lifting capacity, and we thought that.
It had a quite a bit better tipping.
Tipping rate.
Rating, which, which is critical out there for lifting and stuff, and it, it's probably twelve hundred, thirteen hundred pounds heavier machine, and a little more horsepower, and so.
It is nice to have that, if it, that tipping is a big deal, so.
The service, service contracts are, I mean, the, they're going to, when your maintenance is going to be about the same on them also, the long, ongoing expenses?
It is, this was comparing, we had exactly the same warranty and service.
But even ongoing expenses that, outside of warranty are going to be?
They shouldn't be much different, because Caterpillar has a technician here that lives real close to town, so the travel expenses are actually maybe less, we've had very good luck with the.
Very good, that, their technician is very good.
One of the updates was to get John Deere to do a, like, more or less a bumper-to-bumper warranty to match cats, and that's what they did, and so, about the only thing that's not covered is electronics in it.
It wasn't, and it, it would be with.
Yeah, it would be, both of them, so. Should, that's five years.
Five years.
It's five-year warranty with four thousand hours.
Yep.
On a premium warranty.
What year's the old one, you said seventy-five hundred hours?
Yeah, that's about six years old, seven years old, eight years old, maybe eight years old already, it's been there since we, we were seventeen, was when we built that facility, it's the only one that had out there.
Okay, thank you.
Wishers of the board, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve that cat.
I'll second.
Motion my Richard to approve the cat quote, second by Dave, another discussion, hearing now in all, if there's a high.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
No, I'll take the five-minute.
Now we're going on a break.
Now we're going on a break.
Yep. Yep.